Good evening. The time is now six thirty on Thursday the sixth of October two thousand and twenty-two, and so I shall commence, and welcome everyone to this meeting tonight of Winchester City Council's Business and Housing Committee. For those listening and watching, I'm councillor Tony Bronk, Chair of the committee. Firstly, we have a few housekeeping points to make. Open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and livestreamed from the council's website. In addition, a video recording of the meeting needs being made and will be publicly available shortly. For those in the room, I ask that you remember to turn your microphone on and off when you've finished with it, and to speak clearly towards it. I observed the meeting from home last time around, and it was very noticeable to me when members spoke maybe to somebody on their side that they weren't speaking towards the microphone, though those trying to listen can lose track of some of the proceedings. Please, if you have any electronic equipment with you such as mobile phones, please either put them to mute or turn them off, and please try to also mute any alarms on your iPads. For those of us in the room, in the unlikely event that it's necessary to evacuate the building, the fire alarm will sound. Please follow any instructions given to you by staff or fire marshals. All fire exits are marked in green exit signs. Please proceed quickly and calmly to the assembly appoint in Abbey Gardens, and do not try to use the lift, it's not working. I thank you all for making the effort to climb the stairs. We did make arrangements, if there was somebody who wanted to access the meeting, to open it and then adjourn it to move ourselves downstairs, but I'm happy that we haven't needed to go through that procedure. And so, turning to the agenda, you will see that the first point of business tonight is to call for a vice chair to assist me this evening. We've had apologies from councillor Fern, who is suffering from a migraine, I've heard today, and it wasn't possible to arrange for a deputy, so I apologise for that. So have I any nominations, please, for chair? Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, Chair. I'm always very sorry to hear about migraines, they're horrible, and I should like to nominate councillor.
Thank you for that. I think I'll second that, if I may. I mean, it might sound strange, we're not, we don't have any particular agenda, but I've had a quick word, and I'm pleased to say that councillor Cromwysen said he was happy to assist me, and so can I ask if we can please approve that nomination?
Agreed.
Thank you so much. For other apologies, I'm not sure if I read this out, or Matthew?
Happy to, Chair. So we've had apologies from councillor Miller, who's been replaced by councillor Horrell this evening, councillor Radcliffe, who's been replaced by councillor Edwards, and, as she said, councillor Fern. Councillor Ferguson has also asked me to pass on our apologies, Chair, as have the members of TACT. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I must now call for declarations of interest, please, has anybody got a declaration that they must declare? Nobody else? Okay. I have a personal declaration because I have a grant, the annex, which is let, so I have an interest in that respect. I believe it's just a personal interest in this particular paper. All right. Minutes of the previous meeting held on twenty-first of June two thousand and twenty-two, we've received one request for an amendment, and that's that councillor Wallace should be shown as an attendee, a member attendee throughout the meeting. Otherwise, do I have agreement that the minutes are an accurate record of the meeting? That agreed? I know you can't, you went there. I was remotely watching, but I wasn't a participant either. Okay, chairman's announcements. I'm going to provide you with a quick update on items discussed at the last meeting. It's something new, I hope it's useful to you. Please let me know after the meeting, or Matthew, what you think of the initiative, and whether we've got the information about right, or a little too much, or that you need a little bit more to be helpful. But firstly, I'd like to tell you that I met with Gillian Knight, the corporate head of housing, councillor Ferguson is the relevant portfolio holder, and councillor Horrell to discuss and agree which papers should fall within the scope of this committee, and which would be covered by the new Cabinet Housing Committee. I think we can cover this a little further under item seven, and so I should park it there. So regarding updates, we last, or the meeting last, looked at the compensation and reimbursement policy. Andrew Kingston has advised that following the first draft of the housing compensations and reimbursement policy being reviewed by TACT and the Business and Housing Policy Committee, various amendments and improvements are being incorporated into the document. Positive, the updated and final draft version is being scheduled for final member approval at the February two thousand and twenty-three housing cabinet. However, as we're approaching the winter heating season, the intention is to trial the document in a draft format to test its robustness and appropriateness of the policy. With regard to the empty homes strategy, Kevin Reed has advised that following the presentation of the BHP zero thirty report, officers acknowledged the comments made by councillors. The new strategy was formally approved and signed off by the other portfolio holder Decision Day on the fifth of September by councillor Paula Ferguson, and Mr Reed has responded to each of the points in the minutes, and we will circulate those to committee members. The business and economy papers reviewed at the last meeting, Andrew Goslow has advised that regarding the Green Economic Development Strategy, work has commenced on two of the three actions, which will be started and completed in their entirety within the two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-four plan. These are scoping and framework development to deliver a cultural strategy and deliver a sustainable tourism strategy. Work is ongoing in preparation for papers coming forward to the February and November Business and Housing Policy Committees respectively. This has included beginning stakeholder engagement, such as a session with the city centre partnership addressing delivery of the cultural offering, and the Attractions Forum and Discover Winchester Group on the development of the Sustainable Tourism Strategy. Funds have also been established in the UK SPF Investment Plan for activities which are in support of both strategies. Concerning the High Street Plan, this has been incorporated into the Green Economic Development Strategy. Activities delivered through the UK SPF Investment Plan will be in support of several priorities established within the original plan. For example, opportunities to drive football will be derived from events such as lights in the city, and developments of the overall offer is addressed in the funded work around improving the street markets. Finally, regarding the Global Enterprise Week, which was a matter I made in the, or drew attention to in the chairman's announcements, officers have met with Josh Armstrong from the University of Winchester to discuss the programme, which he said is still coming together. We will work in partnership with them to promote the Global Enterprise Week in the Business Bulletin, along with other routes to market with support from our corporate communications colleagues. There's a marketplace event planned, and we were in discussions about hosting that as part of our regular street market, where student entrepreneurs, around five, will showcase their products or services. This also fits in with one of the recommendations from the Street Markets Review around street markets providing an opportunity to showcase new entrepreneurs. Thank you for that. We're now in a position to refer to public participation, but I've agreed with councillor Wallace, who wants to address the committee on both business items, that he can make his contribution to the committee following the presentation of the papers by either the portfolio holder or officer presenting the paper. I think that would fit best, so I hope you agree. So with that, we're now able to move on to the substantive business of the committee. We have two recommendations to the committee which I'll run through. They are that the policy committee review and provide comment on the direction and priorities of an early draft of the private sector housing renewal strategy, two thousand and twenty-seven, twenty-two to twenty-seven. Secondly, they were asked that members support the council exploring the possibility of implementing a private sector housing grant assistance fund targeted at providing financial assistance through grants or loans to fund essential repairs for owners and landlords who qualify under agreed criteria. And I shall ask Karen Thornburn to introduce the paper for us.
Thank you, councillor Bronk. Can everybody hear me okay? Thank you. Good evening. For those that haven't met before, my name's Karen Thornburn, and I'm the Service Lead for Strategic Housing, and alongside me is my colleague Kevin Reed, who's the private sector housing manager. Unfortunately, the author of the paper, John Easy, couldn't attend tonight, so we're going to present the paper on his behalf. The private sector renewal strategy really serves three purposes for us, and that's firstly, it's actually a legal requirement for us to have one, to demonstrate how we spend our financial assistance in the form of grants to assist those that live directly in the private sector, and our main grant is the disabilities grant, disabled. I knew I'd get that wrong, but I also knew I couldn't say DFG because somebody'd asked me what that was.
We couldn't say it.
Yeah, that's fine. Secondly, it's also about setting out our priorities to enable the housing renewal services appropriate across the district. And thirdly, it's also about us providing advice and assistance, not only directly, but being able to signpost and ensure that we can meet our ambitions to improve all the living conditions of those in the private sector, inclusive of reducing carbon emissions through our joint initiatives, and I've outlined some of those in the paper. The strategy supports the council's broader aims, and these are set out in the purpose. I can list them, but they are there for everybody. So, do you like me to list them?
I'm happy for us to refer to them.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. And so really, tonight's paper really is recommending that you consider and comment on the direction and the priorities of the strategy, because it is a very initial draft, it's a travelling document, a working document. So within the paper is, I have, there has been incorporated a draft strategy, and we would very much be open to work, you know, with direct comments or input for those priorities. And we'll also be involved in the wider private rented sector housing team, TACT, the Housing Advisory Group, and the Strategic Housing Officer Group to get their input as well into the strategy. I would like to make one apology at point two, point twenty. I refer to a link, but unfortunately, the link isn't in the paper because we haven't taken that policy through this route, so I do apologise, that was my error. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll take questions on the paper and the policy, so councillor Scott.
Thank you, Chair. I've got a few.
Sorry, Chair. I slipped up, didn't I? I did say I would enable councillor Wallace to first address this, I do apologise.
Thank you, Chair. Right, as I'm sure you're aware, the UK has the least energy efficient housing stock in Europe. For the latest data shared in the council's KPI report, only forty-eight percent of homes in the Winchester district achieve an energy efficiency rating of grade C or above, which is only, only a good level, it's not great. With the government, even with the government's rate cap, energy costs are anticipated to increase by one thousand one hundred and eighty pounds for a band C home, one thousand six hundred and four for a band D home, and a staggering two thousand two hundred and eighty-five pounds for a band E home. This means that people in our area with less energy efficient homes will be going cold this winter simply because they don't have enough insulation in their house. Helping to people to improve their home insulation therefore needs to be a key action for this council over the coming months. We've talked in previous meetings about improving council house energy efficiency, and a more detailed member briefing on the council homes retrofit roadmap is planned for December. However, it's important to recognise our responsibility towards private homes as well. In the Winchester district, only thirty-four percent of owner occupied properties and thirty-six percent of private rented properties achieved an energy efficiency rating of grade C or above. This is shockingly low, especially when there are grants available to help the lowest income families. Most people are not aware of the impact energy efficiency has on their household finances. A recent survey estimated that, when they went unquestioned, people in a recent survey, their response from moving from a band D to band C thought they'd save about a hundred pounds per year. In fact, the true figure is about six hundred, it's over six hundred pounds, so it's if they manage to improve the energy efficiency of their house from a D to a C. Savings are even greater for homes in lower bands, for example, an annual saving of over a thousand pounds for properties moving from band E to band D, and that's every year. It's not, it's not a one-off, it benefits everybody, ongoing. Section two point seventeen on page sixteen of this pack shows that in the Winchester area, there have been only seventeen referrals to the LEAK grant since April two thousand and twenty-one, and fifty-five in total to the LAD scheme. Frankly, these figures are awful, and shows there is clearly a massive opportunity for doing more. The actions identified in section nineteen, page twenty-nine, are somewhat woolly and talk about general improvements with very generic targets for what we're going to achieve. In order to accelerate efficiency improvements, it would be good to have a breakdown of the number of houses at each energy efficiency level, and I'd expect to see a specific number of houses that we need to be brought up to standard each year, so a plan showing us moving houses out of those poor bands into higher brands. At the moment, we've just got a woolly statement saying we'll improve them. For households where the upgrades are privately funded, the council can provide advice. For households which qualify for grants, we need to move these forward as quickly as possible. There are insufficient funds available to support all the upgrades, and this challenge should be put back on to the council, it should be put back on to us and the central government to find the funding. There is a massive opportunity out there. Only forty-five percent of homes currently have roof or loft insulation, thirty, thirty-five percent cavity wall insulation. To address the energy crisis, the cost of living crisis, and the climate emergency, we have to make a step change in home energy efficiency. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your contribution, greatly appreciated. I'll now call for members to raise their questions, and councillor Scott to start.
Now, Chair, I've got a few questions, I don't want to hog it. Do you want me to do one question and then come back later, or would you want me just to carry on?
If your, if your questions are concise and we're able to proceed with reasonable pace, then I'd like you to take as many as we can. If I find that we need to break up the sequence, I might ask for others to, and then come back to you. Okay, thank you.
Okay, obviously bearing in mind, Chair, that this is a private housing sector review, because I think not specifically property services sector, sort of swallowed too much of our debate on energy efficiency, which is, we haven't got people like Andrew Kingston in the room. So focusing on the private housing sector, about what the big bulk of this review is about, is my first question on page fourteen, we have under two point twelve, the stat of three hundred and sixty-one properties, HMOs being in the district licensed and accredited. One of my strike questions, I would say, is, is that going well? Is the landlords very supportive of that scheme? Is that, is that a sort of figure, three hundred and sixty-one, that we are happy and comfortable with, or is that because we're restricted on officer time? So that's my first question. Want me to carry on questions, or do you want to answer that and come back to me?
Could we, if there are several, maybe deal with them as we go through? Thank you.
In respect of HMO accreditation and licensing and accreditation, HMO licensing is a legal requirement. The criteria around licensing changed in over two thousand and eighteen by pretty much any shared house occupied by, perhaps, excuse me, two or more households, legally became barred to be licensed with the local authority. At the current time, we do have, as the paper says, in the region of three hundred and sixty-one licensed HMOs, in respect to those properties which don't require to be licensed, so that is any HMO which only has between three or four tenants. Although they don't legally require to be licensed, we have got, who operates our voluntary HMO accreditation scheme, and so we do encourage, as far as possible, landlords who own those properties to get them credited with the council. And as part of the accreditation scheme, we've got sets of standards which chief accreditation of property will need meet.
Okay, next one is on page seventeen, under two point nineteen. The first quick question is, I didn't realise we had an energy officer, so it'd be interesting to introduce that officer to members, and what that specific role of that officer is about. And under two point twenty, it mentions consideration of a grant assisted fund, and no recommendation at this moment in time on the level of funding available, it quotes in this paper. So the question would be, if this obviously is draft stage moving on in consideration, where is the money going to be for the grant assisted fund? Is it, and I'm hoping it's not, the HRA will be protected, because that's obviously really should be for the city council tenant's money. So perhaps I could have, first of all, who is the energy officer? Because that would be, because it's quoted, a really nice time.
In respect of the energy officer, her actual title is Sustainability Officer, and it's a lady called Anna Wise. Yes, with a W, W Y S, Sustainability Officer. Y S E, Wise.
Thank, thank you. In relation to the question about the grant assistance fund, this paper is asking us to, whether we can start the exploration of that, so we won't have a lot of the answers to the questions that you've asked councillor Scott, because we now want to go away as officers and draw up a draft scheme, policy, what works would be covered in that policy, because obviously fixing a roof to totally replacing a roof is very different, so what can and can't we do within this, this policy? So John Easy has started that work, but we didn't want to continue that work until I'd brought, we'd brought the paper today. Regarding funding, part of our paper will be requests, obviously that has to be funded, and that will be a decision, council, but it would, I'm assuming, if I'm right, Richard, would be looking at the general fund and not the HRA?
Yeah, I mean, councillor Scott has highlighted, it can't be funded from the HRA, it would have to be general, HRA ringfeds protects against that sort of cross subsidisation. And whether the paper's clear enough on it, I mean, but it is, it will be, it would be really challenging in the current circumstances to establish a grant fund. We don't have pots of money sat around that we could use for that, but, but officers can, you know, can seek out, you know, external grant funding at times, that's what it is. So it's more the general principle, I think, you're exploring at the moment, Karen, isn't it, about, you know, is that something we should spend our limited resources on? Because, you know, it isn't a large resource within our private sector housing team, or should we be focusing on enforcement or other issues? It's more around that priority, seeking a steer on at the moment.
So if I can just, and that's what really we're asking in the paper, is whether you want us to, to do that piece of work, or whether we, we draw a line under that this evening, and that's why, really, your steer, and whether you'd like the officers to go away, and then bring something back at a later date? Thank you.
Couple more questions, Chair. I'm glad I'll ask that question now, because that's a cat amongst pigeons, isn't it, really? On page twenty-one and twenty-four, it's all homes in on licensing of HMOs, and it gets reference on page twenty-four, six point three, about the Article Four, Starmall, Winall. And you'd know my ultimate question, because in reference to page twenty-one, it says not all licensed, and, and there is a detrimental effect on neighbourhoods, and then it goes on on page twenty-four to sort of have that statement that, well, it's an Article Four and Starmall, Winall. So my question would be, having now known that we've had for a number of years the Article Four in Starmall, and the year plus afterwards in Winall, do you think that has solved all the issues related to HMO impact in those communities? And obviously those also communities which haven't got the Article Four. So it'd be interesting to know, if this is a draft stage, to really home in and have the opportunity for the next three years that this paper's meant to be coming in for, is how are we going to address the impacts that HMOs do have on our estates? We did do an ISG back in two thousand and twelve, stroke thirteen, and that needs refreshing, which I keep saying to officers, but it really does need to really have reference here, because an awful lot of this work does come out under the private housing sector. And I've got one more question after that, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Scott. We'll, we'll take that on board and take that back with us, because the whole purpose of tonight is to ask you to discuss the priorities, so we'll take that back, and we'll need to work with a wider team to be able to answer that, and to be able to consider putting a plan in the strategy. Kevin would like to add something.
In respect of the Article Four and HMOs generally within the city, we don't actually get a huge number of complaints about HMO properties. We obviously do get complaints, but complaints aren't necessarily from residents who will probably be more, in case you're implying, impacted by HMOs. The complaints.
No, my question would be more of a, maybe I've misled it, if you were to create a community structure now, and in, in the real world, that we were just about to put the new estate Starmall together, and you would have a high proportion of that, of housing for families, and facilities, and children have school to go to, and shops, and so forth like that, you wouldn't suddenly shove four hundred HMOs in the new estate called Starmall. You wouldn't do that, because that wouldn't have been thought through, and it wouldn't have been planned through, as, as, so that's where I'm coming from. The impact that, that's happened to places like Starmall, Winall, and it's happening across the town as well, that's the impact that needs to be addressed. So it's not so much about the complaint system, it's about what it's done to the communities.
Thank you, I think the points have been received.
Yeah, as Karen said, as a wider team, and probably as a wider council, that issue would need to be investigated by other teams apart from private sector housing.
So we'll take that one forward as part of the feedback. Before we continue with questions from councillor Cromwysen and then Horrell, I'd like just to deal with the formalities of thanking councillor Batho for managing to join us. I knew he had a sort of a clash to be able to be here as a deputy on time. Just to deal with the formalities, have you any declarations of interest for either of the papers before it was tonight? No, thank you. Thank you for joining us. That's, that's perfect. And then I'll add.
Fantastic, thank you, Chair. So on page twenty-seven, and bear in mind this is a draft and you want some ideas, under the twenty-seven, and section eleven, you quote working with local partners, but you've only got one subsection. All the other subsections around there has a lot of subsection one, two, three, four, an explanation of what you're doing. It's quite disturbing that you've got working with local partners, and you've got, you know, a few sentences, but you've not got how you're doing that, how you're doing regular network meetings, or exchange of information, or training resources, or budgets, or whatever. So it could be, that section could be expanded a bit more, I would suggest.
Thank you, councillor Scott, we'll take that back on board, thank you.
Thank you very much for your questions and taking us through the paper in an orderly way. If we can now take questions from councillor Cromwysen.
Thank you, Chair. This is just, hopefully, I've got sort of two questions, but the first ones should be really easy to answer. be really easy to answer. I can tell that councillor Scott has deeply, got a deep level of experience in these types of, this type of policy around this sort of area and how it fits into communities. So my question's likely to be more superficial. But first, the first part of it is, is this a well-established policy that's been written up several, and gone through scrutiny several times before? And this is like the latest iteration? But I can kind of read it as, okay, it's been scrutinised before by lots of experienced councillors, and now what we're dealing with is, you know, this year's iteration? Or is it the first time we've pulled together our, you know, document, the policies based on all the experience, years of experience with people? So that's the intro question. I just want to get that clear before I ask my next question.
Thank you very much, yes, it's been a legal requirement since two thousand and two. And there is a link to the last strategy, which was two thousand and sixteen to two thousand and twenty-one. We've also benchmarked against other Hampshire strategies and they do follow quite a similar format. So, yes, this is, and as I said in my introduction, we know, we appreciate it needs panning out and more information, and very much wanted everybody's input for that. Thank you.
That's, that's great, because that, when I read it, a lot, because I'm a relatively new councillor and this is the first time I've looked at this type of policy, there's like so much in it that, you know, I could pick away at lots of things and I think it's probably best I don't. So my particular question, what, that came up was, I was thinking about the tenants who are in houses that might qualify for grants. So this is in the private housing, tenants that might qualify for grants to improve the energy efficiency. What powers do they have or does the city council have in relation to works where the landlord is not supportive of the works? I mean, I can't imagine what they might be, but, but if it's like, you know, insulation and so on, the landlord may not be comfortable with the potential damage that might be caused, that sort of thing. So what powers do, do, does the tenant have? What powers do we have to actually get that stuff done?
In the private rented sector, private rented properties needs to have an energy performance certificate of a minimum of band E, which is four, to be honest. Those properties which are rented out and they have a lower rating, so either F or G, aren't allowed to be rented. And we could actually take action against the landlord, his letting of property, which has E of F or G. We've also got the powers to serve an improvement notice under the two thousand and four Housing Act under the rating system, which would require a landlord to prove the energy of a property. So that's our, that's our main tool. It's the government's desire, or was, yes, it is the government's desire, to try and improve the energy performance of private rented properties. Not substantially, by two thousand and thirty, they're hoping to have the minimum energy performance certificate level will be seen. So there is an aspiration for EPCs in private, to increase over the next, it's the minimum E.
If I can just ask a supplementary to that bit then, so I think you said that if they're in E and F, you, there are definite powers that we can pull on, but if they're in, say, D, are there any powers that can be then to try and lift it to band C?
Well, through encouragement, yes. But legally, but legally, if the property does have a minimum EPC rating of E, then it's meeting the legal minimum requirement. It's unfortunate that the level is so low, but as I stated, it is the aspiration of the government for landlords to increase performance of their properties, the energy performance of their property over the next. And in view of the current energy crisis, I'm sure many, many tenants as well will be strongly encouraging their landlords to try and do something to actually improve the energy efficiency in order that they're not going to suffer, you know, excessively, even, even more excessively, EPC bills or anything.
Thank you. Councillor Horrell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the officer team for bringing this at this stage, because it's a really good opportunity for all of us to contribute to the drafting of this policy. Chair, I have a, a number of sort of comments which the officers very happily take away, I'm sure, and a, a couple of questions, not everything needs to be answered this evening. In section two, two point eight, there is a, a mention of small landlords who struggle to keep up with regulations, and we've heard that more generally in the press. And we talk about helping them to understand that, and I think we need to be really clear as to what we're doing here. So probably one of those sections, as councillor Scott says, where we sort of need to understand what our output is going to be. Chair, on six point two, page twenty-four, I would be questioning, we've undertaken our mandatory licensing of HMOs, but I'm questioning why we wouldn't do any other selective licensing? What that gives us is a better understanding of the properties and our knowledge base would significantly increase, and that way we can perhaps advise and guide more efficiently. So I'm not convinced that we should just ignore those other opportunities. We, we meet our statutory requirement, but maybe we should be doing more in that area. And as councillor Scott has indicated, you know, certain communities have, have a very significant number of HMOs. Throughout the paper, you talk about Winchester University, but of course we're a city of two universities, and one of them promising to have more students here in some shape or form. So we probably should be thinking about the relationship with them and how we proceed. Chair, on page twenty-nine, we start the action plan and the priorities. And I couldn't help thinking that actually in the private sector, based on the figures we see in the table on page fifteen, we should have priority two as our number one rather than number two. And that is because most of the things that people come to us about relate to the sort of condition of their house, the damp, the bad repairs, the bad condition. That's not to say some of the climate change issues are not equally prevalent at this time. But if you've got a house that, you know, hasn't got properly fitted windows, doors, the, the water's pouring through the ceiling and making the room damp, you want some of those basic things done. And, you know, insulating it then brings a whole set of other issues if you've got fundamental repair problems with the property. So my question is, I would be advocating in the private sector that we, given the complaints that we receive, we should be looking at the fabric first and then the energy elements. Chair, I would also just ask the team to just think about the NHS links. The, the link of people going into hospital and coming out is a really important one. And we see it in our own council stock, where tenants don't really have the right support and the right accommodation post illness. But I'm not quite sure whether it's clear here what we're really going to be able to do in this sector with those links. In fact, as a council, maybe it's something not just for the private sector strategy, but actually for our total interaction with the NHS. How can we make that link between tenants, residents in private sector going into hospital and coming out, and those needs that they have, maybe adaptations, but support around that? And it's not clear to me, it's a good intent, but it's not clear to me how we do that. And finally, Chair, I would say to the team, I'm not in favour of the Grant Assistance Fund as a pot of money, because I do think fundamentally, if you're a private landlord, you take on some responsibilities. You're getting some gain in reality, and you've got to take the pain of what comes with that. And I think at the current time, we're absolutely short of money as a council. We have a duty to our own tenants in our own council properties to ensure our, our retrofit programme is in, in good order. And we're getting a briefing on that as, as we've already heard in due course, hopefully before Christmas. But I would just question whether we've got enough money in the pot here. There are other grants available, and if we're signposting people sufficiently well, then hopefully, as councillor Wallace indicated, we can get some better results than we've had so far on people accessing the funds. So just some food for thought, Chair, that I hope the officers will take on board. I don't necessarily need answers to those tonight, but I hope you'll take it in the spirit in which it's given. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we've strayed maybe into some of the debate territory rather than question, but are you able to answer that last part about the, the funding aspect? Or we can pick that up in a minute, can I? There are some further questions.
Thank you. Sorry, the funding is a policy or funding of referring people to grants, sorry.
Well, I had two points. I would not be in support of your recommendation in the paper for the, the additional fund, but I would be in support of us signposting people to other funds, which clearly is already happening. I'm just questioning, given the comments tonight about the number who've accessed that, whether we have a sufficiently robust programme to signpost people and encourage them and help them to access some of those funds that are clearly available. Thank you.
I think Richard might be able to assist as a little bit on that point.
Just, I, I may be misinterpreting the, the figures you refer to, but the work that we did with Portsmouth to access that specific grant funding was controlled quite significantly by the limits of, of the grant funding itself. And the majority of residents in the Winchester district simply didn't comply with the bid. So that's what restricted the numbers. It wasn't that we weren't actively trying to promote more people for that grant funding. It's just unfortunate that grant funding at the moment is targeted far more on deprived areas than on areas such as Winchester. But it was pretty shocking, the numbers, the small numbers that we, we were able to put forward. That's something we have made representations about.
Thank you. Can we now take questions from councillor Isaac?
Chair, just a couple of questions. Is there any way that we can compare and contrast the energy efficiency from the private sector to ones within the council? Because I, I feel that there may well be some that are failing, and I'd really like to compare them that we have compared to the private sector. I'm sure there'll be good or bad across the board. I hope they're good in our eyes, but is there any way that we can compare? And when that review for energy efficiency actually took place? Really useful.
If we take that and then move on to further questions?
If I start and then the experts on the other side of the room can, can, can finish off the response. But as far as our own stock, we have very good data around the energy efficiency of all properties. And we hold that on our own asset database, so we, we could target measures very specifically. We know where we put in cavity wall and insulation. Of course, we don't have that data across the private sector, but we do have information from a stock condition survey and from sort of EPC that are completed, that, that information's available nationally, isn't it? I suppose it's less specific data we hold on the private sector. Do you want to add?
We do actually have the data, excuse me, across the private sector now, from a company called Absola. And also where we're part of the consortium, which I think Richard referring to, with the city council through agility eco, they have a data as well. But certainly for the private sector, we do have information on EPCs, both in the private rented, private rented sector and also owner organised. So I think a comparison could be made between our own stock and housing stock.
Okay. And can that be done by Ward? So could the Ward councillors request that information of an area, for instance, for our areas? If there was a particular problem, could we go to somebody to say, could we have a review of the energy efficiency for this road or?
I don't know if it could go down to that particular detail, to be honest.
But we have it per property.
It could be investigated.
But, but we do have that information per property, is that right?
We would, we would only have it where, where an EPC exists for the property. Of course, they don't exist for every property. It's only where someone has commissioned that or sold their property or whatever that gets knocked. But, but we could certainly run reports and see what information can be, on that database.
So just to make sense of, in my head, excuse, sorry, so sorry. So we don't have all of the energy efficiencies for, up to date for all of our properties as it stands at this moment, only some of them?
I can only comment on private sector housing, not, in respect of our own housing stock.
Yeah, sorry, we have, we have detailed information on how, on, on the council housing stock and could run reports and share that information. It's the comparison between the two that may be challenging, yes.
Short ones now, thank you, thank you, Chair. On page twenty-one, in relation to the public sector housing, can I just make a comment that in our area, we have a register, which is everywhere else, of council houses, and we do rely on public sector renting to a degree. And we are finding in our area that they're being sold. The landlords are getting rid of them and they're leaving the area. People can't afford to rent in Oxford and they're leaving. And it's happening on a daily basis. I meet people that have had to leave because their house is up for sale, they've left the area. It is a big problem in our area, and I'm not sure whether we can do anything to address that. But we need to find a solution, because at some point, nobody's going to be able to rent in Oxford because of it. I'm flagging that.
No, thank you for bringing that up. Actually, because obviously my service overseas, housing options is inclusive of homelessness as well, and in the last quarter, we've seen a significant approach of households approaching our service because their tenancy in the private sector has, has been brought to an end. And one of the main reasons for that is the landlord is choosing to, to sell. We are trying to investigate the reasons why landlords are selling. Some will provide us with that information and, and some won't, but we do ask. And it's a multitude of things, and then in the economic environment that we find ourselves in, interest rates. Also, there's some consultation out at the moment about venting in the private sector and changing the tenancy agreements, and that means it'll be harder for, for landlords to get their properties back as it currently stands. So there's quite, it's quite a few variables that's making private rented harder. Also, private rents have gone up ten percent in the last year, and affordability is an issue, especially in District of Winchester. So alongside that, and sorry to, to go off piece a little bit, but we commissioned a piece of work to, to look at our overall strategic provision of homelessness, and that's one of the things I've asked specifically to be looked at, is the access into the private sector. Thank you.
Just one short one, just to clarifying the two point four, it says Winchester. Is that Winchester City or Winchester District? That was the only question, thank you.
It should say district, so we'll amend that, apologies.
Okay, thank you. Before I ask councillor Edwards to ask his question, can I just ask, it was a follow-on from councillor Isaac's question there, and making reference to decreasing numbers of properties available for renting. Is there evidence, or do we have evidence of those properties that are going from ordinary tenancies, so to speak, to Airbnb? Because I've read that that's a, a major impact on the availability of houses for rent.
Honestly, we haven't done that piece of work, because if a family approaches us because their tenancy is being brought to an end, we're very much interested in working and supporting that family and most probably don't follow the landlord, the journey of the private landlord. We could certainly go back and look at maybe the last quarter, at some addresses, and see what's happened to those properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I've heard in my area, it, it's a major problem for some people looking. May I take councillor Edwards or is this, I'm linked to the same?
Sorry, councillor Brok, Brok, I, I was just actually building on that point that you've just made, which is the social, you say in the report, two point four, the shrinkage of the social rented sector, which is building on the point that both councillors have just made. I think we need to really know what that means. Is that, you know, ten or a hundred? We almost need to quantify, I'm sort of linking and saying the same thing, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, councillor Edwards, sorry it's taken a while to get to you. Do you remember your question?
Happy to wait, Chair. Really just a matter of clarification. We're asked to consider the Grant Assistance Fund. Trying to understand the thinking there prompted by councillor Horall's question, which referred to grants possibly going to landlords. By reading of 220 on page 17, is that emergency fund to provide grants or loans to owner occupied households struggling to carry out essential repairs? So maybe I'm wrong?
The 2.2, 20, that was one of the considerations as well. We do occasionally receive inquiries from owner occupiers as to whether there are any grants available for them to take small scale repairs to their properties, possibly up to cost of, say, a thousand pounds. They're not frequent, but we do occasionally receive them. And in the last six months, numbers of inquiries we've received have gone up, but they are still, it's only really a season. That's why owner occupiers were...
Thank you. So my correct reading of this, councillor Horall, for my attention, is that this would be a single fund that would be eligible for which both landlords and owner occupiers would be eligible to apply.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a very opportune time then to close questions and move into debate. It's clearly a potentially contentious issue. And it seems that already our opportunity to provide assistance has been largely curtailed by the availability of external funds. And if those clearly aren't available, then it may be that we don't, are not inclined to put a lot of resource looking for them. But at the same time, with the amount of concern about the need for improved energy efficiency, I would hate to think that we were missing an opportunity to provide clear signposts for any residents of the district to be able to secure the maximum amount of available government funding. Maybe I just throw that out there and ask people for their thoughts about to the extent to which we might be prepared to support the initiative of a grant assistance fund on a wider basis or not. Does anybody wish to dive in on that or any other points? Councillor Scott?
Yes, Chair. I think there is lots of crossovers and I think we need to sort of be very clear on supportive of what this paper is about, about the private sector housing and what they, their sort of bread and butter, sort of day to day, sort of shift is really on supporting the Winchester district. And the inquiries that come through members is quite often about the condition of houses, about damp and mould and sort of, do we look at additional licensing? That's something we mentioned on the ISG back in the day. Having the private housing sector experts feeding into the Article Four debate helped us back in the day as well. The general housing advice that you'd get from that sector. And what we learned tonight is now we've got a good all singing and dancing, sustainable officer, Anna White, who should be probably coming to these meetings and actually taking quite a lot of the emphasis about how do we address councillor Wallace's good intervention about the energy initiatives and how we get that grade up to save our residents, especially in the private housing sector, some good money, 600, you know, was mentioned as a good cost savings. And then also intervene with the property services. But it is crossover. We need to actually be thankful to our private housing sector officers and not try and swamp them with something that's probably just a bit, little bit stretched out of our remit, to be honest, and get the relevant officers here who could actually pick up exactly what you've mentioned, Chair, and councillor Wallace has mentioned about the efficiency and energy things that we need to put in our homes. But moving forward, I think there's an awful lot in this documentation which is right and it's ready to go to the next stage. But I think there's a few things that we've all interjected with which will strengthen it. I don't know if it will due to come back to us before it goes on to have a, you know, a stamp that it's a full fledged document. Maybe it'd be good to, for us to see it again, and we all singing and dancing to see what's been put back into the document. But I just want to say, you know, from a local member's point of view, especially our friend Kevin at the end, has helped the estate of Stamford for many years now. And I do appreciate your time and effort on everything you've been interjected over the years on all sorts of different scenarios. And I hope moving forward that this paper will strengthen that housing sector. But I do think, Chair, I think future papers that come in, whether it's all singing and dancing cabinet housing meeting, we do need to get that sort of tabled, how do we get the efficiency savings and the efficiency things in homes, you know, in a relevant paper pretty soon. Thank you.
I know you're in debate, but it might be helpful just for a clarification. Is that okay? I wouldn't want members to go away thinking that Anna Wise has been recruited and is a solution to our private sector sustainability issues. That would be unfair on Anna. Anna is a coordinator of our carbon reduction programme, but responsibility for delivering intervention measures remain with the service departments. I know Kevin won't welcome me for saying that, but previously, the private sector housing team have always supported interventions around energy efficiency to private sector housing. And we need to continue to invest in that, albeit recognizing we've got very limited resource there. Anna is a good coordinator, but she is not taking on work away from those teams. It's really just a point of clarification. I wouldn't want people to expect that Anna could be pulled in all sorts of directions across the council and be the solution to everything. She's a great asset and supports teams like Kevin's team to deliver that work.
I can come back straight into that on debate. If that's the case, we seriously need to find money and funds. Because if we're going to take the initiatives right from a member who's taken time to come and address us as a committee today, we've got to find the funds to actually move, you know, this efficiency and energy cost saving at a critical time for our residents forward. How we do that, who we do it with, don't know, but that's what we need to do.
Thank you for that. Are there any other? Yes, sorry, I did bring out councillor Horall. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I think we mustn't lose sight in this because this is quite a wide ranging discussion tonight. As Karen has already advised this, this is a statutory policy that we must have and one that we've evolved as councillor Crewe isn't as asked over time. So we must embrace actually quite a lot of really important things. So the disabled grant, adaption grant, statutory requirements on HMOs, there's a lot of different elements in here that we must all embrace. And I don't want us to get distracted on the idea of the additional grant when all those other elements are absolutely crucial and we must deliver on those as an authority, not only because many of them are statutory, but also through past practice, we've made a positive impression on this sector in the district. Chair, I would also want to say, we talk about the Ukrainians having homes here, but we have been a very generous district historically. Syrian families and other nationalities have come here and settled and we've been able to accommodate them. And I think we just need to recognize that this is, the Ukrainian situation isn't sort of new to us. The numbers are perhaps significant, more significant, but our openness and our welcome to other displaced communities has been very extensive. And as an authority within this particular sector of housing, it is a way that we can help those communities. And I'd want us to make sure that we were embracing that as we go forward. So Chair, I think overall, there's a huge amount that the officers have given us to think about here this evening. And as often, it comes down to the hard nosed cash and looking at Mr Botham of what we have in our coffers. But I do think we also must remember that there is a significant responsibility on the landlords themselves, if this is their intention in terms of being in the marketplace, to ensure that they provide homes that are fit for our residents to live in. And based on the number of complaints, it appears that quite a number are not at that level at this time. Thank you, Chair.
Very much, councillor Horall. Are there any other contributions before I sum up some of our thoughts? Councillor Crewe isn't?
Thank you, Chair. And I may well say things which kind of overlap with some of the words that councillor Horall just said. I mean, I think it's a new paper to me, so I'm not that familiar with having seen it several times before. So there's a lot to take in. I think there are things, there's lots of different types of sectors in there or segments of the community. And I think there's things like the grants for disability, mobility issues, so that people can stay in their own home and when they come out of hospital, that they're enabled to go back to their home rather than have to go somewhere else. I think that feels like public money well spent rather than ending up in social care or something else. In fact, I'm not suggesting that any other things are not money, public money is well spent, but that definitely hits the button for me. I think tenants in places that are in really poor condition, where for whatever reason, for some reason, it's not possible for the landlord to do something about it, I think there is a kind of duty of care on, you know, the council here to be able to do something. And if you haven't got the money, you haven't got the power. So instinctively, I feel there should be something there, but I think it needs, I want to pick up on a point that councillor Horall has said, which is, it shouldn't be a means for private landlords to avoid their responsibilities. Owner occupiers who are in situations which are, again, for their personal circumstances may mean they can't bring their house up to standard, it's leaking, et cetera, again, for similar reasons. I think it'd be great if there's some access to a fund. I was a little bit unclear myself on how much of these grant funds are actually money that the council's providing or money that is being administered. So we've applied for grant for money from elsewhere and that if we didn't use it for that, we wouldn't have it. Because, you know, if it's money that we would have anyway and we're choosing to allocate it, then you need a conversation between, is it good to put it in that grant assistance fund? Or actually, could you be using it on something else? And I'm sure there'd be a lot of competition for that, that money. So if it's where we're proposing a fund that's coming from outside, central government, for example, that you can only get for a particular purpose, then great, I'd support it. To pick up on what councillor Wallace said, as a member of the public today, I guess, I think he's spot on about the, one of the major challenges we all face is bringing up the standard of our homes in the UK, in which the district for us. And improving those EPCs is probably the vehicle to use. But I'm not sure that we've got the scale of funding available to us to be able to do that. Now, I'm sure councillor Wallace will probably take me offline and say, well, we've got to show leadership, we've got to do this, got to do that. But I think that's, we've got to figure out, I think, as a council, where can we get access to the funds to be able to take a leadership position? But I don't know, I don't think we should be trying to squeeze that out of our existing council budget. So just my thoughts on that.
Thank you very much. Right then, I'll put together just a few thoughts. Obviously, we're going to, we've got the tapes to, or the audio records to refer back to for the huge amount of input that we've received under the recommendations, or recommendation one, that we review and provide comment on the direction and priorities of this early draft. Like councillor Crewe, it was a new one to me because these things, you know, the frequency with which they come up hasn't occurred in my term. It did strike me as a policy which needs more work. It's an early draft and I, you know, I'll separately draw attention to observations of detail, as councillor Horall said, she will. I think the main things to take away from our conversations are concerns about resource and bearing in mind the importance of energy efficiency and ensuring proper oversight of the properties, having concerns about references to shrinkages of the sector and wanting to know how severe that shrinkage is and some of the causes, such as Airbnb, which has been attributed to problems in the Twyford area, certainly. We've had reference to questions about resource being particularly critical to section two and the question whether we support the council exploring the possibility of this grant assistance fund. And I think what we need to take away from tonight's discussion is that there's a strong feeling that landlords need to look after themselves and their tenants. But I think I've got the feeling that because of the significance of the impact on people, if there are funds, we would like to have some comfort, that our antenna are up to be able to identify and utilise whatever available funding there is. And that's where these partnerships, I think, enable us to do that to a large extent. But I wouldn't like to say that this body does not support, you know, the proposition of exploring the possibility. And I think that the wording therefore is useful to enable us to provide some support, but with a caveat that, you know, before we do too much for owners themselves and we need to, in a way, look after those for whom we are directly responsible with, you know, when resources particularly difficult to find. Right, with that, I'd like to move on to the next item. Findings and future plans for following the street markets review. The Policy Committee are asked to review and comment on the Winchester district street markets review, note the findings and recommendations. Oh, sorry. I was so keen to move on. Thank you very much for your attendance tonight and taking away all of our comments. And I'm happy to have a discussion if there's anything you want to ask further to it, you know, later on, you know, outside this meeting. Good night. You can tell I'm a neurotist. Sorry about that. So we're asked to note the findings and recommendations outlined in the review and to support the approach to action, the recommendations outlined in the review, which include development of branding, promotional materials, marketing activity, improvements to market appearance derived from investment in signage and street dressing, branded gazebo's, pitch layout, customer flow. I think pitch layout, looking at the glossy magazine, it talks about sightlines and I'm assuming this is the line of sight as opposed to the actual pitch lines on which the site is drawn. And then there's the number of stalls and additional themed markets. So to, before we have questions, we'll have a introduction to the paper from, I believe it's going to be councillor Thompson, but we are happy to, pleased to have Andrew Costola with us as well this evening and he may well be able to contribute additional information. well be able to contribute additional information, if that would be helpful to councillor Thompson. And then I shall ask councillor Wallace to give us his comments, before moving on to questions. So without more ado, councillor Thompson.
Thank you very much, Chair. The City Council, along with contributions from the Winchester bid and the two Covid recovery programmes, commissioned the Retail Group last year to undertake a review of our markets. The Retail Group were asked to look into our current market offer, not just in the city, but also Alsford, Bishopswortham and Wickham, and explore whether there were any development opportunities. They took a look at the overall market experience, gained feedback from businesses, market traders and customers, and importantly, assessed whether the economic impact on our city and market towns where markets were held. This report and the findings have been extraordinarily very timely. It provides a valuable insight for the council, particularly as we need to retender our market contract in the coming months. So it's vital that we know how they are operating, whether they are in the right location, whether we can better support our markets going forward, and also gives us the opportunity to improve our offer, and perhaps enhance the visitor and customer experience. It's also very timely, because of course, we've put in our bid to government for our allocation of a million pounds from the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, and also now the new Rural Fund, for which we've got an allocation of 750,000. And you will know that I've been taking the opportunity to visit all our market towns, to hear their views on markets, and explore what we might be able to provide by way of prosperity funds to boost our high streets. So it's been extremely valuable to have this information to inform our discussions. Interestingly, it's clear from the report that apart from Wickham, which of course doesn't wish to have a market, and they've been very strong, and I'm sure you've read the report, so you will have seen the comments there, our markets are all considered to be located in the right place, and that they are working well. And I think it's also worth noting that, and certainly something that, contrary to my, you know, knowledge and, you know, hearsay, that businesses are generally of the view that the market is seen as a welcome addition to the retail offer, and actually doesn't detract to what the, you know, the shops are offering. But we all, it's also worth noting that the report suggests that we could look to have additional markets, and they could be themed. And it also suggests how we might sort of help our markets in terms of rebranding, and looking at signage and pitch layout, as you've said. So turning to the recommendations, we would like the committee to comment, obviously, on the contents of the market review, note the findings and recommendations, and support the approach that we are considering taking, which is developing improved branding, promotional activities, and improvements to the appearance, with, as I've said, signage and branded gazebos, as well as improved pitch layout and customer flow. And I don't know whether Mr Costello's got any further comments to make on this, but that's my introduction to the report, and welcome any questions.
Thank you very much, councillor Thompson. Andrew, would you like to add anything before?
Nothing to add for me at the moment, Chair.
So I'll ask the first question, please. I've been asking a couple of times, as we lead to, up to today, the paper made reference to the fact that we hope to hear in September, whether the grant that we've applied for has been received, because I think that's fundamental to tonight's discussion. Do we know yet whether we have been granted the amount of money that we sought?
Well, as I sort of indicated last night, in answer to a question from a councillor during council last night, we have been successful, we've gone through the first hurdle for the million pounds, but we are still waiting to hear final confirmation. And I know that the officer team have been pressing government about this, but so far, we've heard nothing. And of course, as the weeks and months roll on, we are really keen to get that first tranche of money, because it is meant to be spent between now and the end of the financial year in April. So, you know, time is of the essence here, or whether we have a commitment from government that we're able to carry over that money into the forthcoming year.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. So may I ask the committee, the committee in our discussions and questions to take on board that we're hopeful, and maybe expecting to get the money, but that some of our observations can also consider the option of what we'd like to take forward with whatever resource is available, should that full funding not come about. So now I'll ask, if I may, councillor Wallace to have his say, and then I'll move to questions. Thank you.
Right. So as you know, Winchester Council has published a guide to sustainable procurement that is designed to assist officers in making more sustainable procurement decisions, aims to provide practical information on how via our contracts, we can reduce our impact on the environment, ensure high ethical standards are followed, and bring benefits to the local economy and community. Has the Sustainable Procurement Guidance been flowed down to the street markets? And if not, what is the council? It may be that some of the policies are not applicable, but others, including, for example, fair trade, procurement on food, and single-use plastic appear to be relevant. Moreover, going a step further, will the council consider banning single-use plastic to both Winchester Council buildings and across Winchester, including the street markets? Five years ago, I think this would have been a step too far, but now there's significant maturity in alternative products. There are a lot of festivals, events, places where we've already banned single-use plastic. And it would help improve the environmental credentials of the street market, and could help towards the goal of raising awareness, creating a recognisable brand, and improving. Thank you.
Councillor Horrell?
I think councillor Isaacs was ahead of me.
I'm sorry, I didn't notice. But I don't know how I missed your hand.
Go, go, go.
I'm happy to say councillor Isaacs first, and I'll write your name, so I don't forget to come back in.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick question, if I may, in relation to some of the comments in Alsford Future. Thank you for coming over. It was a useful meeting that we all had. Hopefully, some good things will come out of that. The formation of an events or visiting market working group to identify the optimum mix, frequency and location is recommended. Now, bearing in mind how, at the moment, the town trust organise markets, are you saying that that is taken out of their hands, and it moves to somebody else that has an input in that? Or are you saying that they then, they have been the sole responsibility for organising, managing and putting out the Picard market, the French market, but also we have been a market town 12th century. So regular market seems a bit redundant, as we have a regular market. That's why we want to keep our regular market. So I'm wondering if you could change that, because that doesn't reflect the fact that we've always been a market town, we've always had a regular market. I don't dispute the fact that I know what you're referring to, that, you know, but it's not clear reading this as to what, because we have a regular market. So, you know, it's almost a redundant statement to say that, you know, likely to achieve a destination outside the market, but we, a regular market, but we have a regular street market every Thursday, we have additional markets now. But I'm confused by why a regular street market, we've already had a regular street market.
Yeah, well, just to come back in there, no, no, we're not suggesting that it should be operated by, and we have met the town trust, and they have seen the findings. I'm not quite clear what you're, which, that you're.
So just, sorry, just to clarify then, so where you're saying that the formation of a working group, and I'd like you to clarify that in relation to the fact that you're not taking it away from the town trust, and the second one, where the statement in the next paragraph goes, the regular street market, likely to achieve a destination outside. So are you saying that?
Councillor Isaacs, help us all find the text you're referring to. Page forty-six.
Alsford Future.
Thank you. Sorry.
Sorry, I beg your pardon. So it's just, I just need some clarity on that, if I may, because that assumes that it comes, if anybody read that, that would assume that it would be taken out of the trusts. It would be a different group organising it.
If I could just clarify, these are the findings of the market review. They're not in our recommendations of our report. Our report is suggesting that we might improve the branding, and we may well look at the opportunity that extra markets might provide. But of course, we recognise that Alsford already do provide extra markets. But this isn't, these aren't our words, these are the words of the review. And far as I'm aware, we're not taking but that one forward, because they're not in our recommendations on the main report. Think I'm right in saying that, aren't I, Andrew?
Yeah, absolutely, councillor Thompson. And we would want, we have no intention of suggesting that the current way in which the market is delivered in Alsford would be changed. But we would be very keen, in our recommendations, to work collaboratively with that organiser, to help develop and grow, and support the Alsford regular market and potential themed markets going forward. And to that end, we are actually arranging an additional meeting with that market provider, to start to talk in more depth about these findings.
Thank you for clarifying.
Councillor Horrell?
Chair, thank you for the opportunity to ask a couple of questions, if I may. Thank you for the executive summary. But please, could we have a copy of the full report, so that we can understand all of the data that has been acquired, which is clearly very helpful? One of the interesting points for me, and I'm just questioning, were the areas for improvement detailed on page forty, two point eight, which I'm not disputing at all. But one of my experiences of the Winchester market is the need for some improvements on the safety of the loading and unloading environment, particularly as they close at the end of the market, when everyone is very keen to go home, the interaction with pedestrians. I've had a situation where a visitor was hurt by a vehicle whilst I was alongside them on the street. And so although you don't detail it, I think it would be most welcome if we understood how we're just going to manage that more effectively. I hope I, I'm sort of speaking with a voice that, you know, others have experienced the same thing. It does get very chaotic, and is not always administered as well as we might like. My other question really relates, Chair, to the contractual situation. We're way outside the time for a contract renewal here, and it would be most helpful in the paper, as it progresses through the system, to better understand in two point one four, the retendering process that we're going to undertake. There has been a question already about the procurement approach. And are we using this document and its useful information to ensure we've got an appropriate spec, an appropriate brief, where we might add elements like the safety to that. But it would be good to understand when we're doing that, Chair, and how we might approach it. And I know, Chair, I'd be remiss if I didn't speak for my colleague from Bishopswortham, who I'm deputising for this evening. I think the view from the team there is that they would welcome, embrace more in terms of the market opportunities. So they welcome the report and are supportive of that. But I'd be remiss in saying we're not mentioning the conveniences, because, but all of the market towns say, and I think councillor Isaacs would say the same, it's great to have people visiting, but if they can't spend a penny, then, as we said at council, that's not great. So it has to go hand in hand with suitable facilities that visitors can use. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Horrell. On that point, then, I'm glad to hear that Bishopswortham have the largest amount of unclaimed sill potentially available to use for that purpose. But we'll leave it for them to decide on how they might take that forward. So perhaps if you could answer whether the full report would be made available, and whether, you know, what will be done about the procurement process and involvement in that?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, very happy to send you a copy of the full report, and we can send it to all committee members if they wish. It was a huge document, and we didn't think putting it on the agenda tonight, you know, people would actually wade through. But it is an interesting read, and so very happy to send that through. Contract renewal, I will leave for Andrew to touch on. Safety of customers, councillor Horrell, you've raised a really important point, because I too have sat in a cafe, or sat outside on a cafe, when vehicles have been reversing extremely close to where, you know, I and others were sitting. And I agree that actually, the situation does need managing in a much better fashion. Bishopswortham, yes, we had a very good meeting with the parish council down there, and we went on a walkabout. We all did inspect the toilets as well, and actually do agree that they are in need of serious attention. And it is, obviously, the report before you says that Bishopswortham would welcome the addition of a regular market. And I think that is something that we would definitely want to investigate. And it's just really a question of finding a suitable location for that. And I'm sure we can, we can help them with that. I don't know whether Andrew wants to say anything about the contract renewal, and maybe also pick up on councillor Wallace's point about sustainable procurement.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Yes, councillor Horrell, in reference to the policies and procedures, and particularly around safety and so forth, we are working with our colleagues in the estates team, who are responsible for the management of the city market, from an economy perspective. And we are reviewing all of the policies and procedures and operating arrangements for the market. That will reflect the findings and the recommendations of the research that we have carried out to date. And they will form the basis of the procurement arrangements, to procure an ongoing market manager going forward. And in relation to councillor Wallace's points, yes, we will be adopting all of those elements of sustainable procurement within that arrangement going forward.
Thank you. So councillor Creymoysen, please.
Thank you, Chair. Got three questions here, I think. First one is, there's some reference to the market, thinking specifically about Winchester, which I know more about than the market towns. There's a reference to the fact that, an assertion that the market enhances the shops, or at least doesn't do damage. I wonder what, how was that determined? So want a little bit of insight into the methodology by which that was determined. The second question sort of relates to the points that councillor Horrell made, and you acknowledged councillor Thompson about. councillor Thompson about the safety in the space, but my question around the space side was, you know, at times you can go down, on a busy market day, it can be really packed and it can be quite a challenge, even as fairly mobile, to get through, and I personally find that positive, but I do see remarks on forums that indicate that perhaps some people don't find that positive, so I just wonder what was, was that assessed and what was the view on that, as to whether that was a, you know, the balance, if you like, was it a good thing or a not so good thing, I mean, busy is kind of good, but, you know, that might deter some people from being able to access the market. And the third question, which might reveal that maybe I haven't understood the paper perfectly, is how much of the recommendation, the third one on the list of recommendations, is dependent on the SPF, the Shared Prosperity Fund, i.e. what would go ahead regardless of whether, if we don't get the shared access to the Shared Prosperity Fund? Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor, so to take your questions in order, in terms of how the researchers established how welcome or unwelcome the market traders were in terms of being on the high street, that was carried out through the research study that they had face-to-face, one-to-one meetings with a range of businesses in each of the high street locations, and also through resident research as well, and the resident research showed that as an influencing element, as a reason to visit the high street, a fixed retail unit was as popular as a market trader, and equally, through the research with the individual businesses, they didn't really hear any dissent from businesses that they felt that the actual markets on the high street were in any way unhelpful to their overall business, so that was that question. In terms of the busyness and the layout of the market, that's certainly one of the things that we want to tackle as part of this in terms of, as I mentioned, the operating procedures going forward, and perhaps one of the reasons why we have in the past bought some of the market stalls down from the higher part of the high street, down further to the lower part, to create more accessible space, and yes, it's really important to get that balance between a busy, vibrant high street and one that is accessible too, and as part of this work, we will be working with the ongoing market manager around site layouts, et cetera, and where else the market can extend to, maybe further down Middlebury Street, et cetera, to enable the market to grow appropriately and safely and accessibly as well. And your last question in relation to if we were unfortunate enough not to receive the funding from the UK Shared Prosperity Fund, the sorts of things that we would unlikely be unable to do would be to do things such as investment in, say, branded replacements of gazebos, et cetera, which are all there as an intention to create a better sense of experience and place, but in terms of work that us as officers could do, in terms of working with the market traders, working with the market managers in terms of development and growth of the range and quality of the market trade provision on the market, and some work around branding and marketing, we would still be able to do, but it's the actual physical delivery of assets, if you like, would be a challenge for us without the funding.
And just sort of picking up on the access point, we are very clear that we would really like the market to move into the Broadway, you know, in the future, currently, we have the ability to do that on a Sunday, which we do obviously use, but obviously that's going to take some time because they have a solution for the buses first and other considerations there, but that is our ultimate aim, and obviously that is the ideal place, we believe, for the market.
Before we move on to councillor Edwards's question, can I ask Mr Gossett to revisit the question referred to you about the, whether we ban or actively seriously discourage single-use plastic?
I think it's a great aspiration to have, and certainly I think we should pass that on to the estates team who are dealing with the procurement to look into, but it might be that we have to do that on a sort of almost store-by-store basis, going and visiting them and talking them through. I know that pre-COVID, we were trying to set up a coffee cup renewal scheme, councillors were very keen on that, but of course COVID intervened and we've kind of taken a back step on that, step back on that, but certainly that would be, it would be great if we could achieve that, but I suspect it might be an aspiration.
Thank you, okay, so councillor Edwards, please.
Thank you, Chair, though I hope we're beginning to elide out of questions into debate because I really just had a couple of observations. Permitted?
Permitted, thank you, please.
The first one was just to note that I have often heard over recent years, traders, shopholding traders, complaining about the market stealing their business. And I found it very reassuring in this report to find some, well, some medium hard, as the cheese man does, some medium hard evidence that there is actually lots of extra in the shops as well as in the market stalls. And the other thing I wanted to comment on was really Broadway, which has just been raised by councillors, saying this on behalf of councillor Ratcliffe, for whom I'm deputy councillors for the ward in which the market's. It manages, but it is inconvenient, there are access issues, it isn't always possible for shops where the back of the stall is a shop door, and when we visit towns all over the country which have a proper market square, we realise that we're making do, something special about the buzz and the significance of market square. And so really, I just, it's already been said, but I wanted to, in fairness to councillor Ratcliffe, who wrote to me about this just before the meeting started, and I promised I would say it, we do feel as ward councillors really strongly that the Broadway should be the town's, the city's square, and yes, there are all the problems, movement strategy, CWR, and all kinds of stuff going on there, I hope that there could be, maybe this is the question that I would have put if we put on to debate, you know, can the report going forward have a paragraph at the end recognising the intention to, all opportunities to, in the longer term, to move the market, centre the market? That there is a reference here to, you know, moving to dedicated but remote space would reduce and I'm football, footfall, and I'm sure that's true, but this isn't a remote space, just down the road and in part. Thank you.
Do you wish to respond to that, or shall we move on to further questions?
Well, I'm very happy to, to take that on board because, yes, that is our long-term aim, obviously there are a number of things, you've mentioned them, but it's also, you know, the county is the highways authority, and I believe it's taken quite some time to get the necessary commitments from them to close the Broadway on a Sunday, and we would love to extend that for the whole weekend as a start, but I think we've got some way to go in doing that. Can we add it to the report? Not really, because we're, I don't know.
I don't think we can add it to the actual consultants' report because that was their findings, but certainly as we go forward in terms of the recommendations coming out of this, and obviously the long-term objective, we can ensure that that sort of reflects in the policies that we develop for the delivery of the street market going forward.
That'd be great, if we're documenting markets and the future of markets, let's have that aspiration noted.
Councillor Scott next, followed by councillor Isaacs.
Thank you, Chair. Where does the farmers' market sit within your thinking, because I think they were sort of had their noses put out a joint, recent cancellations with all their produce, which they wanted to obviously bring and sell, so I'm interested to know where the farmers' market fits within those recommendations. Observation, strike question, now we're in observation, strike question, if you talk to some of the oldest citizens of our town, and especially some of the memorabilia photos, there used to be an indoor market in Jury Street, and I'm not saying the market should go to Jury Street because, you know, whatever, what I'm saying is, is having an indoor mechanism to the market, all weather, would actually give a better way of having access in all weathers to the market holders and storeholders and the customers and so forth, so is there any thinking about making it sort of more indoor proof, wherever we cite it, you know, whether it fits within Broadway if the county are on board, or whether we think about, maybe could we put it into the Silver Hill Friars Gate, because that's still a monstrosity looking awful as part of our city? The other thing I'd say is, what lessons do we take from the Cathedral Christmas Market, who seems to have a good layout and a good management structure within the weeks that they hold their market? Do we take any lessons from the way that they've done it successfully over the years? And bear in mind, the footfall that comes to the cathedral and obviously back to the town works for both the high street and obviously both for the storeholders in the cathedral, and I do probably emphasise that actually the cathedral has a good turnaround, they don't have the storeholders always there for very three, four weeks, they sometimes change them within that, you know, half a week, and so forth, so it's a good sort of management structure that maybe we could learn from as well.
Well, right, just, the farmers' market, I have met the farmers' market along with the leader to have a discussion about how, because of course that actually does sit outside the findings of this particular review, because this was concerning the markets that we do and we run, the farmers' market is under a different operation, and our meeting really asked how we might be able to help them improve their offer, because I'm sure you've noticed when you've been visiting the market, when the farmers' market when it's on, that actually, you know, the stall numbers are dwindling, and we heard that the reason for that was that basically the storeholders were all getting on and had decided that they no longer really wanted to come and, you know, that they weren't producing their wares anymore to come and sell, so I think there is an exercise to try and help them through quite a, you know, unsteady period, let's say, because it used to be one of the best farmers' markets in the county, and certainly when I first moved here, it was a real destination, but it has gone down, I don't know quite what we can do going forward on that, but we are aware of the problems of the farmers'.
Yeah, I'm happy to, councillor Thompson, and yes, also on the farmers' market, as officers, we've met with the operators of that farmers' market as well, and in addition to that, in our wider work in terms of the economy team and potentially, you know, some of the funding streams that will come down from the UK Shared Prosperity Fund and the Rural England Prosperity Fund is very much focused around local produce, et cetera, and so that will help in terms of, you know, some of the work that we're doing around that agenda too. In terms of an indoor market, certainly during meanwhile uses of some spaces within the city, we had potentially had discussions around indoor markets, but they didn't come to any fruition, at the moment, there isn't any long-term plan that we have to find a covered space of indoor markets, but it's something that we would certainly keep as an open discussion for all the benefits that that brings, and then thirdly, in terms of the Cathedral Christmas Market, we work closely with the cathedral on that, on that market, it has influenced some of the research and the findings within the research study, and it will most definitely influence some of the best practice that we're using as policies as we develop them for the street market going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Isaacs.
With regards to the new market manager for Oxford's market, on behalf of the trust, obviously, your Oxford Town Council will be discussing with them new layout of planters that may well restrict the layout of the market and how that works, but with regards to the branding, which I think an aspiration we'd all love, who would own that, would that be something that would be stored locally in your head, you know, if I could just, what would be your idea themed on that in relation to, because we don't want, each market obviously at the moment has their own, and they're about £400 plus for each one, we have, it's fairly exposed, there's not much shelter, and we have quite strong winds, so it's got to be fairly robust, so if it swapped to something that was attractive in keeping, which aspiration we'd all love, where would that be stored, who would own it, what's your, what was the plan when you made this recommendation?
Councillor Isaacs, can I just, are you referring to the gazebos or our branding work in terms of actually creating a sort of a communication corporate message around what the markets are offering?
I think it's the imagery of the actual market, I think, was one of the recommendations rather than the marketing, yeah.
Okay, so we are at early stages of thinking and planning about that, and we would certainly be wishing to consult with all of the market operators around the development of that, we feel that there is benefit to create an umbrella brand that states to a consumer what Winchester district's markets are and what they have to offer, but it is really also important that the local markets retain their identity within that as well, so we would be sort of exploring where those opportunities might be with those individual markets, and then also with a designer, et cetera, to come up with a set of branding and a set of corporate messaging that would suit all passes, but we do believe there is a benefit to bring it under sort of one overall sort of umbrella message, if that answers your question, not quite sure, carry on.
Completely understand the marketing, that sort of thing, but in relation to the physical imagery of the gazebos or whatever, are you going to be asking the market, individual markets, to purchase a branded gazebo, no, would that be provided, and where would that be stored in?
At the moment, the plan is that, subject to the UK Shared Prosperity funding, we would be looking to support the markets in the provision of those gazebos, we haven't worked out, so for example, within the city, they are, that's relatively straightforward, we haven't worked out the finer detail in terms of how we might be able to deal with that in Oxford, but the plan is, subject to that funding going forward and the amount that we have, we will be working with the market traders in terms of actually provision of those gazebos to create that sense of arrival and sense of place and sense of consumer messaging.
Thank you very much, I don't think there are any other names or questions and/or debate, have we covered debates as well? One of the things that I've, just sort of quickly looking through to see that we did cover everything, the page thirty nine makes reference to the opportunity for some markets to increase the number Page 39 makes reference to the opportunity for some markets to increase the number of market traders, and I think the number when observed in Bishopswaltham at the time of the review was, you know, that there were 12 and the opportunity maybe for 20. So is growth of the market and not just its current presentation another aspiration that will be looked at?
Yeah, most certainly. Growth and quality of provision as well, they very much go hand in hand. So certainly in the city, potentially at Oxford and also potentially at Bishopswaltham, the study showed that there were growth opportunities in terms of the volume and the number of market traders. But then also, we would be looking very closely at the range, diversification and quality of the provision going forward as well.
So if there's nothing else to add, the key points of takeaway that I think we'd like to ensure on the radar are consideration, if it can't be banned, to seriously discourage and see what we can do about single-use plastic, that the full report will be circulated to all members. A big takeaway about the safety concerns and thinking about how that can be addressed in the procurement and in the meantime, by drawing it to the attention of the various operators. I think that's a particularly important point. We've mentioned the need to remember ease of access through the market and consideration of indeed whether there are problems because of large numbers of people, but also remembering that people with pushchairs and wheelchairs and things do need to have unfettered access, not only to shops but up and down our high streets and what have you. I think there's a big takeaway that the more we can get in the Broadway and where we're unencumbered by street furniture would be desirable, and I certainly back that. If I've missed anything else, I apologise, and I'm sure members will draw it to your attention. So thank you very much for attending tonight. And remember to extend my thanks to the officers for joining us and also the portfolio holder. It's taken a while to get to you, and I'm sorry you're always tending to be last. It was almost an opportunity to change it round tonight, and I'm sorry that didn't. So thank you very much for your time on that respect. So now we can move to the very last item of the agenda, which is to look at the work plan. And I did mention at the outset that I draw your attention to also some of the aspects that, or the contrasts between what's on our work plan and the way in which some of the other papers with matters more of detail and operational nature will go before the cabinet, a cabinet housing committee. So for example, the October one will be of the Cabinet Housing Committee when we discussed it, would be addressing matters such as the housing company, the HRI business plan and budget options, housing services, cleaning contract, the Mitchell River business case. And whilst we had a request maybe for this committee to look again at the private sector rental paper, I think it may be more desirable for it to move to another body like that, having taken on board a very large number of comments in order to see it progress rather than get bogged down in the sort of committee structure. But obviously, that will be taken by, in a decision made in other quarters. Are there any observations that anybody want to make about inclusion, or shall we just, as the agenda says, note it as well? Thank you. Councillor Isaacs, thank you very much, Richard.
Thank you. I'm not sure where this would fit, but could we do some work on allowing installation of proper showers rather than just baths within our, obviously, a number of residents would prefer showers rather than baths. If they're climbing over the bath to get into the shower, that's fine, but for some residents, it's just, it doesn't make sense, you know, it would be, if a bath has to come out because it needs to be repaired, you know, can we have, can they have the option? Can we put that as a, at the moment, we don't, we don't do it, and it doesn't make economic sense. It would be better for the water, but for the, so many reasons. And I'm just wondering if we could review that at some point.
I remember that being considered in the last municipal year because there was quite a conversation about the impact and its impact on subsequent tenants. Are you able to update us on that?
Chair, yes, you are correct. We have, we've reviewed that policy on a number of occasions as part of our Decent Homes work. Council policy for some years has been, well, we've never had a policy to install showers, and it's a positive decision not to install showers because of the impact of the hard water supplies on our maintenance programmes. And that was a relatively standard policy for social housing landlords historically. We can't ignore the, you know, the emerging pressures around the sort of environmental agenda and the impact of consumption and as well as the social housing white paper, which makes a lot of statements around the, you know, sort of further engaging with tenants around service quality and giving them, you know, that have aspirations for matching private sector provision, and it's important that we do that. So it is a live issue certainly, and one that I think we need to keep on the agenda is to, you know, it will have a big impact on the HRA, so it isn't a cheap option, but it is something that's pretty standard in most housing provision across different sectors now. So I don't feel we're in a position where we should be ignoring that, these issues. I know there's a member briefing on the retrofit programme coming up, and I think this fits with that because it is around energy consumption, but it's also around overall service quality as well. So like I say, financial impact on the HRA, it wouldn't be cheap. Something else may have to give to allow that. So, you know, it will, it will be a difficult area to address, but it is, I think it's always been seen as an indicative way of where standards are different in social housing compared to private rented. Certainly, the current emerging private rented sector, you know, provision of showers is standard. In our own shared ownership housing, it's standard, you know, so we've already, we've got different standards there, and we ought to address that. Whether that's for here or for the new Cabinet Housing Committee, I think that's a consideration. But we can take that issue back and discuss how we can best bring that forward.
Well, I thank you on that basis for raising it, and I do agree that it should be something that's regularly looked at, particularly whilst people are being encouraged to use less water and also showers may well require much less, you know, it'd be cheaper to heat the amount of water that is being consumed. So I think it's a policy decision, and therefore I would like that to be something that's initiated here and then maybe considered for its implementation by the Cabinet Housing Committee. So councillor Scott?
Yes, thank you, Chair. That's the first time I've heard Cabinet Housing mentioned for a few years because I used to sit on Cabinet Housing. Is this the first time that members have heard that, or have I missed something? Is Cabinet Housing due to come back soon? Who's going to be the members of it?
It's now in place, and it came about already. I drew attention to it in my chairman's announcement that it was something, a proposal about to go to Cabinet, and it was subsequent to the decision to already implement it, that we had the meeting that I referred to in today's announcements, so that I could be happy that the way in which it was actually being implemented was as I'd envisaged it.
So mechanisms of who sits on that, has that been drawn up yet then, or has it gone through full council, or?
Can I let Richard answer because he may be closer than I am to that?
Chair, I haven't got the detail of membership, but certainly the first meeting scheduled for the very first October, but my understanding is that both groups have appointed representatives of that committee.
Do you happen to know any more than me?
Well, just to comment on that, yes, it went through Cabinet several cycles ago, and we have...
Excuse me, can councillor Scott, your question being answered by councillor Thompson?
Yeah, it went through Cabinet a couple of cycles ago, and, yeah, the first meeting's already being arranged, and I believe that membership of it has already been agreed. But it doesn't go to council because it's a Cabinet Committee, so it just needed Cabinet approval.
On that point, it remained in the constitution from the previous, it was unchanged from the previous constitution, so it didn't require a change.
Right. Are there any other observations we were able to, well, thank you very much for your very detailed comments on the first page and contribution to the second of our agenda items. And with my thanks for you having all climbed the stairs, good luck with your passage back downstairs. So have a good evening, everybody, and I close the meeting. Thank you.